Six cents. Additionally, we would recommend approval of the plans and specifications for the project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Doug, does that demo include the parking lot and all the concrete?
Yes, this will be a full site scraping, if you will. There'll be some earth brought in to backfill parking lot areas and foundation areas and so forth, so that it's shaped to drain. It will be seeded, and the intent is that it is a simple grassed open space come spring.
But the seeding is us. That's not part of this process?
No, the seeding, the full restoration is part of this demolition package, yes.
Doug, a quick follow-up question to that, two quick questions. One is, when we do regrade that, will it be an indentation with any kind of indigenous plants for stormwater management?
No. The site is very low compared to University Boulevard now, but it's not the intent of this project to create any kind of stormwater management on the property. That is something that may be considered in the future.
Down the road.
But at this point, we're simply grading it out so that it has positive drainage, so we're not creating any ponding or any kind of neighborhood nuisance issues.
Second question, will there be an opportunity for police, or Clive PD, or Clive Fire to utilize the buildings for some type of training exercise before the demolition occurs?
No. And the reason for that is, if you'll recall, with this project, it is a FEMA-funded project, so we are on a very short timeline to get the building demolished. In fact, probably the reason why we did not receive very many bids and received a bid that was probably a little higher than our hopes is the requirement is that the buildings must be gone by January 22nd. So there's not a lot of time to do much of anything. We're currently having the asbestos abatement completed this week and the next week. And then, again, my hope is that we'll be able to turn this contract around pretty quickly and get underway, because January 23rd is not too far off.
Other questions for Doug, otherwise I didn't share any.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, by Ted. Further discussion? Is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to address the council on this item? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? Motion to close public hearing passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution approving plans and specifications?
Second.
The motion is second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post the vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the receipt of bids?
Second.
Motion is second to receive the bids. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Receiving the bids, passes by a vote of five to zero.
And move the resolution awarding the contract to Earth Services and Abatement, DBA, I would demolition for $69,998.56.
Second.
Resolution is second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? Resolution awarding the contract to Earth Services, doing businesses, I would demolition, passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Next item, we have the public hearing for the 2020-2024 CIP. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before the council this evening, the capital improvements program for the next, proposed capital improvements program for the next five years, 2020 through 2024, was discussed in very much detail in early November. This represents about a little over $74 million investment in the city's infrastructure and facilities over a five-year period. One of the discussion items that came up that night in terms was our investment of stormwater-related infrastructure outside of like typical storms or with the roadway. We included the details for that in the memo in the packet with it averaging about 1.3, a little over, a little under 1.4 million a year in terms of stormwater management investment. And then, but that does not take into account the buyout program, which is an additional $2 million on top of that. So I know that was a question that council discussed that night, that we wanted to provide that additional information in terms of comparison to other per-annual infrastructure investments that we're making as a city. Again, I didn't intend to necessarily go through this in detail, knowing that we reviewed this pretty extensively about a month ago, but would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Staff would recommend approval and your consideration.
Any questions for Matt?
The only question I, the only question I have, we've had this discussion as well, was, and I know, Mike, you talked about stormwater and the priority that you have and other members as well. But on roads right there, you know, we've used Woodcrest as somewhat of a guinea pig right there with our work on that. And there's other roads as well, specifically Summit Drive again, that really took a beating out there, as we all know. And I just want to make sure it's a priority that some of these roads that are very much in need of repair really get a priority as we move into, into, into next year's plan right there. I want to make sure these are addressed.
Yeah, we're using Woodcrest as kind of a test case for the particular subgrades and the aggregate types that we have in that particular Country Club and Country Club West neighborhoods, and to see if the heavy patching, for example, that we did on Woodcrest will hold on that subbase versus alternatively looking at milling and doing an asphalt overlay. Doesn't make a lot of sense to do that if the subbase can't handle it. And so that, seeing how Woodcrest holds up this winter will be a nice guidepost for us as we look at some other streets in that area that are starting to see similar deterioration. And then there might be some cases, and some it might be one, and some others where it could just necessitate a full reconstruction if that subbase doesn't hold, and we need to get new subbase underneath it. So this will be a good winter, hopefully better than last winter, but a winter to tell us how things are going to work in that neighborhood.
And Matt, as we discussed too, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting in January. Kind of related to that, some of the citizens. And Susan, maybe some of your neighborhoods, if they've had questions for you, and I know Country Club, Country Club West are both in that same boat with that 90s development right there, I would offer that, that Jeff and Matt are going to visit with some of my neighbors and relay those same concerns, answer questions as well.
Yep. And I think a big part of this process is educating too, in terms of the focus that this council has on pavement management, why some techniques are being used, and how we need to, there's going to be some, a lot of science involved in seeing how different streets, different soil types, different subbases react to some of these treatments. And I think the more we can educate our residents, because I know there's a lot of frustration out there with pavements in front of, front of homes, but in terms of just educating and setting expectations that our intent is to do the best we can all throughout the city. But you know, you have, we are increasing our resources substantially to this investment as a priority of this council, in that we need to make sure we're using those dollars as the most efficiently we can for the rightability throughout the community. So we're happy to do that.
And to your point, Eric, I had followed up with Matt and Jeff on some other things with this in regards to stormwater, as well as your concerns on Summit and others. I think it's agreed on that, maybe not entire fixes, you know, like we all want, but you know, they did a really nice job over on Lincoln a few years back in your old hood, that it was small patches. They didn't get everything, right? And it was unrealistic. It wasn't scheduled to do the whole road, but they did a real nice job on very small squares and putting those out. And you still have some missing pieces on Summit, maybe, but the bad ones could be covered in the spring. And I think that's reasonable.
I agree.
Any other questions for Matt? Otherwise, we need to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. Before we do so, is there anyone in the chamber that would like to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post the vote? So the public hearing is closed by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution approving the 2020-2024 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Resolution is second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post the vote on the CIP? It passes by a vote of five to zero. Our next public hearing involves the lease of facilities to the Clive Historical Society. Todd?
Good evening. This is a lease that the city's had with the property at Swanson Park, with Clive Historical Society that expired, and we needed to renew that. So we structured it for a five-year deal with the option of an additional five years at the end of that. The lease pretty much stays the same. The city's responsibility is mowing the grass, removing the garbage, and the basic typical park needs to that park. The Clive Historical Society is responsible for all the buildings and other facilities on the site.
Questions? Ted?
Move to close the public, public hearing?
Second.
The motion to close the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the chamber who'd like to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk post the vote? It passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution approving the lease?
Sir?
We have the resolution and a second to approve the lease. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote on the resolution approving the lease to the Clive Historical Society? That passes by a vote of five to zero. That is the last of our public hearings this evening. Now we'll move on to the item number six, the financial audit.
So, Mr. Ellis is on his way here from Cedar Rapids, and originally with the original agenda, we were anticipating him being, getting here by the time we got to this item. What I would recommend, or at least ask the council to consider, is holding on this item to the end of the discussion items and come back to this action item, if you, if you could, Mayor Protem. And hopefully, Mr. Ellis, I know he was driving from Cedar Rapids and was planning to be here around seven. And so we would hope that that will happen. If not, we will move forward if we still get to that action item. But we would love to give him the opportunity as our auditor to provide that.
It seems to be the consensus round table to allow us to defer that item. We'll move on to the next item, which is the MOU with West Des Moines on the corridor study. Doug?
As we've talked in the past, City of Clive has been working with the city of West Des Moines for the consideration of the development of a corridor planning study for the area, roughly 600 acres, mostly in the city of West Des Moines, but including the commercial properties along University at the 114th, the 100th, and the 86th Street general areas. We think that the approach of the two communities working together to try and work towards a common goal of finding ways to preserve and hopefully enhance the real estate values in that area makes good sense. We have been working collaboratively with them for the last few months, going through a solicitation process for consultant services. We have interviewed four firms. We have narrowed that down to two firms, and West Des Moines is in the process of finalizing the final review of those two and selecting a firm to begin the project. The anticipation is that that project will commence mid to late January, and will be completed by the end of the calendar year 2020. At this time, with the progress that we've made, we think it's appropriate to come back and have the council address the memorandum of understanding, which in essence establishes a relationship between Clive and West Des Moines for, West Des Moines to deliver the planning services for the corridor study. In exchange for them being the lead on the project and producing the plan that we have agreed to, we would contribute to the project at an amount of $50,000. At this time, we would recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding, and we look forward to getting much more engaged in the process. And we will be asked, asking for one or more of you to engage in that process as well. We think this will be an excellent opportunity to kick off, if you will, or begin to advance the idea of integrating a more economic development focus into the planning process, because we do feel that this corridor, being a commercial corridor, and most likely long-term continuing to be a commercial corridor, the idea of that economic development presence, I think, will be very beneficial. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Doug, Eric?
Doug, can you summarize me just kind of the scope of this, and a couple of deliverables that you're expecting on this? Just high-level stuff.
Sure. So the first task is really to carefully consider and understand the market and economic forces that are occurring in the corridor. We know, just anecdotally, that there's a lot more competition for commercial space. Jordan Creek, other places are beginning to have an impact on that university corridor. So understanding the market forces is certainly the first key priority. The primary engagement is really going to be related to those commercial property owners, of really understanding what, what they're experiencing and what is going to motivate them to reinvest in their properties. Once we're beyond that stage, the question then is, what is the reinvestment? How are they going to make money? And I think as we've gone through this, and as we've talked through with consultants on different ideas, you may be able to manage some incremental changes, but in order for this area and this corridor to continue to be vibrant, it's probably going to mean some substantial changes. And it may mean introducing additional or new land uses. For example, the old traditional shopping mall that is Valley West Mall, that format may no longer be appropriate moving forward. In other places, it may mean looking at bringing residential into those areas to create some additional market demand for some of that commercial activity. And in some cases, it may mean that the retail, we just have too much of it. So those buildings and those properties may need to have a new useful life of office or some other application. So the planning process will get to the point of trying to better understand what those land uses should be over time, what is marketable over time. And then, we anticipate three or four specific case area studies to delve more deeply into what should the transition look like. So I do foresee one of those areas being a Clive portion. I think the University Park Shopping Center is one that will get the most attention, at least from the Clive area, the old Babies R Us, Toys R Us facility. I think the property owners will have the appropriate motivation to engage with us in looking at opportunities for that center. And my hope is that we'll be able to come up with, again, a marketable, viable redevelopment concept for that area, and that the property owners will be anxious and motivated to execute it.
So our portion's $50,000. What's the total?
$250,000.
Okay. And then, the steering committee, what's, what's the makeup of that? I mean,
Sure.
Big is that? And how much do we have on that?
We've continued to talk about that with West Des Moines. I think they're pretty flexible. I think they're very willing to accommodate Clive as we want to be engaged. I don't think that they're saying that since we're paying 50 of the 250, we get
Right.
certain number of people. So, again, I think as we continue to talk and collaborate together, we, we understand that we're in this together. So if we've got folks that are really motivated and really wanting to dig in into the economic development, commercial real estate space, let's use them, regardless of which city they're from. So we are fully anticipating a steering committee of probably 13 to 15, kind of a traditional approach, some staff, and then as many folks as truly want to be engaged and motivated and be champions for this project will, will be looking for.
If you want someone like a Susan to be on that, we can.
Certainly the folks that, again, have a passion for and really want to start working deeply into the market and the economics of how to convert this commercial real estate. Susan, it'd be a great opportunity to, again, kind of kick this economic development concept off, I think.
As well as a realtor or something.
Commercial Realtor, maybe.
I'd move the resolution approving memorandum of understanding with the city of West Des Moines University Corridor Study.
Second.
Motion for the resolution is second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote?
This left-hand side, we moved on that one quick, because we were about to be passed up in the whole meeting without a resolution or a second.
Well done.
And that passes by a vote of five to zero. The next item on the agenda is approval of pay request from RDG. We just need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Your Honor, I'll be recusing.
Thank you very much, Susan. Would the council please vote? And that passes by a vote of four in favor and one abstention. All right, our discussion items begin with District One Neighborhood Plan RFQ. And Amanda?
Good evening again. So back in your strategic planning meetings in August, the council, more in-depth, discussed the District One or Eastern Neighborhoods plan area, and some of what they wanted to see with that planning process that we were getting ready to launch. So with your guidance, we have developed an RFQ that includes kind of a general overall plan for the area with two specific focus areas, including the flood-prone property buyout program area, and a project, a catalyst project around that Lanayen Park area to help spur some development and park enhancements there. So as part of the RFQ, staff has also completed some extensive background reports. We're hoping to kind of really get into the meat and potatoes of the project and be able to provide the consultant with a lot of that background information, so we can really focus on engaging the community and working on the more specific fun parts of planning, so they don't spend as much time doing the background work. We also put together an opportunities map with a combination of things that have been identified by staff, and then the council identified at those strategic planning sessions in August. And also, we drafted some initial engagement ideas for outreach. So we included with that some information about kind of what we would expect the selection committee to be, as well as some past engagement methods that the city has used. We also tried to identify some challenges that we could foresee with the area. We do know it is one of our more diverse areas. We have a significant number of the population that don't speak English at home. You know, there's a lot of potential challenges there, internet connectivity, other, other challenges that they might run into there. So we want to give the consultants a heads up on that, so they can really figure out in the forefront what would be the best engagement opportunities there. So we would love to get input from council members on anything they would like to see specifically included in that, and then kind of get your thoughts on what level of engagement you're hoping for on different aspects of the plan. And then additionally, would love your input on steering committee members. We are anticipating to have around 15 members, you know, plus or minus a few either way, with probably four to five project meetings those people would be involved in, and then potentially individual interviews. So from a city perspective, we're anticipating at least one of the council members. We have a planning and zoning member who's volunteered. The city manager office will have a representative in community development department, as well as possibly parks and public works and some other staff as appropriate, depending on what the specific meetings are about. And then more from the community, we're hoping to find representatives that represent single-family owners, multifamily property owners, commercial property owners, and also the business owners, as well as other stakeholders in the communities, like Clive Community Services, West Des Moines Schools has Crescu School of Inquiry. There's a whole list of other possible stakeholders that we brainstormed. So that's just kind of the highlights of what we're thinking. And then, kind of referencing back to that economic development component, we would really like some guidance on if there are people you all think would be good fits for that, and how we might be able to integrate those individuals into our steering committee to really start guiding some of those reinvestments and ideas, and making sure that the plan is grounded in a economically feasible and realistic approach, so we can really start implementing some of the changes. So with that, we are generally have formed our selection committee. It'll be Matt, Doug, and I, one of our planning and zoning members, and Christie from the chamber is going to represent that kind of business perspective for the selection. We thought it was a little much to ask a business owner to be on both the selection and steering committee, just due to the time commitments and the amount of time that would be required during the workday for that selection committee. And then, I believe, one of the council members will serve on that as well, is my understanding. So we will hopefully issue this RFQ tomorrow, assuming you guys don't have substantial changes that you're looking for. And then we will plan to have a shortlist prepared by February 5th, so we can schedule interviews with those teams, and have a final scope and contract back to you guys in March ideally, so we can get the project kicked off with wrapping up on or before June of 2021. So it'll give a little over a year to complete the project. So with that, I will take any questions, comments, recommendations?
Questions?
I would recommend that the city council member who lives in that neighborhood be on the committee. A lot of sense.
Think we can?
Want to draw a short straw?
Or both, or both. I would probably recommend both.
You know, we've been talking about Lanayen Park and Clive One for a number of years. It's been a priority for us. I'm just glad to see that we're moving forward with the selection in a process right there to move this project forward. I think it's well needed. It's, it's, it's the right time to move this forward.
Would it be helpful to, as we're looking for volunteers for boards and commissions, as we have done for that, would it be helpful to put something in a newsletter as far as steering committee, or no?
I think there's going to be a lot of avenues related to community engagement on this one, and I think that's one of many. And I think also, as we get into this, it will be better to find the team we're working with and that community engagement process, which I know Pete's been working with Amanda and Doug on that, with this process in particular, that we're also going to want to engage the council, particularly related to the folks in the steering committee in terms of your relationships, whether it's those in the neighborhood, the economic development component, business owners, people that you would point out. We want to get that, that input from you as well, as we put that list together. This is, this is the big engagement planning project for us. I mean, the university corridor is another one with another community. This is your top priority for the coming year. And so this is going to be where a lot of that community engagement focus is going to be, as you're about to hear about in a couple items from now, related to that. So we definitely are going to be seeking your input, and we'll be using any medium we have, whether it's newsletter, online, other community engagement aspects that I know Pete's interested in looking at using to get a very impactful steering committee that's ready to do some work and provide a lot of input to us and some guidance as we go through this process.
The only thing that I'd add really quickly, I think it's important with, with the demographics of this area to have a really diverse committee right there. And I would maybe put some of those requests out in perhaps Spanish, or Bosnian, or other languages that might reflect the makeup of that neighborhood. I think it's important to get the cultural aspects from those folks that live there, that'll be using this park on a regular basis. Let's get their input on what they want to see. I think we really have to look across board and out of the box to reach out to some of those folks as well.
Any other comments for Amanda? I'll close with just this, this one. I think the background reports and this whole package was just impressively done. So kudos to SAP. I thought they did a great job. I mean, the amount and detailed information, I think it's going to be indispensable.
Took me forever to read through.
Took me forever to write them, so it's been great.
We weren't very nice on this packet. It was the longest we've ever, the biggest we've ever done. So, eight, over 800 pages.
810, but who's counting?
810.
I tried to put a lot of pictures in, so.
So anyway, great job. We're looking forward to this process. So, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Pete, we'll move to you on the water resources.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. This evening, similar to what Amanda just described, we're coming forward now with an RFQ to advance one of the top priorities that you have identified through strategic planning and also through the capital improvements project, uh, planning process. That would be the That would be the comprehensive stormwater management plan. If you'll recall from our discussion during the CIP this project workshop, we have used language now that's going to, we're going to call that water resources. So we're talking about surface water throughout the entire city, including the water that's conveyed through our storm sewer system. The in the memo to the RFQ, you could see some of the priorities that we've outlined. I will say that I did get excellent feedback from Doug on some ways that I could continue to take this content and make it slightly more intelligible to the types of firms that we want to make sure are bidding for this project. So some of the conventions that are more familiar to those firms, I'll add those to this document, but the content and the focus with the eight priority areas will remain the same. I do want to call out that eighth, that's number seven in particular, from the actual draft RFQ, the in-depth analysis of stormwater conveyance in the Eastern Neighborhoods planning area. This is designed to work exactly in tandem with the project that Amanda was discussing. We know we have some very unique stormwater challenges that we'll have to address with projects like the Harbach reconstruction that will be in the future. We'll find it in a lot of other parts of the neighborhood as well. So we want to make sure we've got some excellent modeling of that space, but not modeling that duplicates work that's already been done. Rachel and her team have already been very active in the area, sort of understanding how water's moving around. In that situation and in any other area, we want to make sure that this study is not duplicating work that's already been done, and that'll be a major criteria, part of the criteria we use when evaluating firms that want to do this work. Do they appreciate that? Are they presenting something that shows that they're willing to do the study and the work necessary to understand what's already been done and get something that moves the ball down the field for the entire city?
That study included two-dimensional hydraulic analysis.
A two-dimensional hydraulic analysis potentially is what we've proposed or what we think is necessary for the first planning district, but would not be necessary for the entire city. That number would very much blow past the $250,000 that we've identified as the cap for this project.
Just a specific area. Got it.
We would appreciate direction from council if this is starting to get into the areas that you identified through strategic planning or if there's anything that's missing that you would like us to go ahead and add as we finalize this document.
Any comments for Pete at this point?
Excellent.
Very good to go.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have the community engagement plan. Pete?
Clark is bringing up the presentation. So we are 12 months since we first discussed this, at least I first was had a hand in discussing community engagement in the city of Clive. So tonight, I'd like to do a very quick sort of assessment of how we did in the first 12 months, as I've been a part of that team. I do really want to emphasize, and you'll see this as we go through the summary, that it is absolutely a team. I am very happy to see that over this 12 months and certainly the months that preceded that, we have directors and staff who understand that our work is better when we have robust community engagement, even if that's just to inform people of the work that's being done. Old-school, very effective tools like the newsletter, I would say is a good example of that. On a month-to-month basis, Cheryl is in there reminding everybody what the deadlines are and then appropriately harassing everybody, including me, when those deadlines are getting close and we've got a lot of work still to do. But that newsletter comes out every single month and the reports we see back in the citizen satisfaction survey and just the engagement we see is fantastic. People appreciate the efforts that we put into keeping them warm and welcoming them into this business of self-governance that we do here as a community. So I'll kick off right away. Ran out of space on a slide to put all of some of my favorites, but this is a nice representation of some of the priority campaigns and the priority engagement tools that we established for 2019. So the campaigns we prioritized were the Polk County lost vote, flood planning, education and hazard mitigation, green belt, natural spaces and watershed storytelling, the FY2020 finances for the insidious, including the budget, CIP, tax rates and utility rates, and then pavement management and streets and capital improvements. Up in the top left-hand corner, you see the one little screenshot from a part of the website we created that was specifically for lost. That ended up being enormously popular among Clive residents, and while it may not have been the only place where people were getting information, there was a whole lot of discussion metro-wide and a lot of neighboring communities about how it was going to be, how lost would potentially affect those cities. I feel like our site did a wonderful job in a concise way, representing exactly what you as a council wanted to put before voters to determine if they were to add to the sales tax. Next to it, then, you see one of the most important additions we've put into the toolbox for storytelling in Clive, and that's our new website. As of the last day of October, we've been live with that site, and when we get to the last day of December, we will be completed with the soft-launch phase, which means throughout 2019, we will be living with it, considering it the absolute home for Clive's digital presence, the front door really for the entire city. We have seen more traffic there on a day-to-day basis than anywhere else in the city, any on any other platform that the city maintains, including here at City Hall. So we're very proud of the work that's been done to bring us to this point, and we know we have a lot of work ahead of us to continue to refine that tool. I'm going to call out a couple other highlights there. You see in the bottom right, pictures of the mayor with Mayor Van DeWeg as well from Urbandale. That's when we received the Voice of the, excuse me, not the Voice of the People Award, the in-the-public-service award from the Taxpayers Association of Central Iowa. I consider this one of the big highlights from our year, telling the financial story for the city. Right alongside that, then you see the picture of our teams busy during the freeze thaw cycle, getting out there and making sure Clive streets are safe. This was a massive story for us and will continue to be throughout this coming year. We'll certainly see peaks when we get into the cold weather months, whether that's for the snow work that we need to do or for the pavement, the other maintenance work that we need to do to keep the roads safe. But we're going to keep the drumbeat going as we talk about major pavement reconstructions or major rehabilitations. One last one I want to call out, the picture there to the, to just to the right of our autism awareness police cruiser, that's one of the pictures from our first Clark Street neighborhood meetings. We just had the fourth of we've had this year with the neighborhood, and engagement throughout all four of them has been fantastic. Part of the reason for that is that we've got a great hook. We know that people in that neighborhood really care about this and don't just care about it because they want a smooth ride when they're riding on the street. They want something that's going to make their neighborhood more beautiful. They want something that's going to give them that reliable utility service to their homes as well. That energy that they brought to those first meetings, I think we did an excellent job harnessing. We did an excellent job as a community listening, and as a result, when I opened the meeting last night and could show everybody some of the same slides that we had used in the four, in the three previous meetings, saying these were the items that you identified as a neighborhood that were most important, these were the identify, the items that we took to the council and that the council affirmed were the most important for this project. Last night, when we could go and then talk in more detail about all those things, talk about stormwater, talk about some things that are going to be unpleasant for them as we go through this major reconstruction, they all looked and said, this is exactly what we asked you to do.
Was that last night or Tuesday night?
Tuesday night, I misspoke, excuse me, Tuesday night. They could, I could look at all of them and say, did we get this right? And they were all nodding and saying, yes, you are representing here exactly what we all agreed to, and we know it's going to be a tough, dusty summer, but we're going to get through it. Any questions about some of our performance in 2019? We're going to build on this success.
Who's the grumpy snowman there?
Who's the grumpy snowman there? He is my go-to actor whenever I need to do a little video. He lives at my house, so he works for free.
For free.
Oh, good point. Big bill's coming.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So as with 2019, our engagement plan is built to advance the strategic priorities that have been set by this council. Financially sound metro, financially sound city, great value for taxes paid, excellent facilities, services and resilient infrastructure, distinctive green belt, premier location for families, and then building pride in our city and a sense of care among our citizens for their community. Our 2020 priority campaigns are going to be very familiar to all of you because they are taken almost directly from the strategic planning documents that you've all created. Top of the list, and will be probably our single largest list, lift this year for engagement, will be that neighborhood planning process for the Eastern Neighborhoods. The legitimacy of the decision of the, of the, what comes out of that plan depends enormously on whether or not the people who are actually going to be living there have felt like they had a hand in helping shape it. Same way with Clark Street. We need to make sure those folks are engaged. Now, it will be difficult. We'll have some obstacles to get people motivated to do this because if we start at the 30,000 level, which part of the plan needs to be up there, it's going to be very technical at points and it's certainly going to require some people who have some unique knowledge base and skill set. But there are plenty of other engagement opportunities when we think about uses of the park. There are plenty of engagement opportunities when we're thinking about how do we partner with the area around Crestview School of Inquiry. Plenty of engagement opportunities where a business owner could help us better understand some of their interest in a particular part of 86th Street, for example. I see lots of hooks. I see lots of hooks, and I'm excited to go and find those individual people who care about those unique hooks and find ways for them to plug in and really add value to that plan. I know that Amanda and her colleagues have done a very good job in their RFQ emphasizing how important engagement is going to be to the success of that plan. And we will be carefully evaluating anybody who wants to go after that work, for them to show us that they actually have a track record of doing that and aren't just the types of firms that maybe tack on a little bit of communications and engagement on the backend. Any questions about the Eastern Neighborhood Engagement Project? I'm not going to go into all the tactics here. You know them. We're going to get there with mail. We're going to get there door-to-door, knock doors. We're going to get there with the website. We're going to get there with the newsletter, all the tools at our disposal. We're going to find ways to engage with people. Second, and probably as important and as big a lift as the Eastern Neighborhoods planning process, will be the Water Resources Planning Process. Again, a project that requires a whole lot of unique knowledge, a whole lot of unique skill set. That's why we're going to find a good consulting team to help us do it. But we also know in the course of looking at our entire city, that we're going to be thinking about some hotspots. We're going to be thinking about places like Indian Hills Woods. We're going to be thinking about some privately-owned MS4 facilities, facilities that are big and moving water safely through the city. We're going to be talking with private property owners that maybe have had some serious erosion that has happened on their property as well and thinking about how do we best think about this, I, this project of big water coming, how do we soak it in, clean it, and then convey it safely into Walnut Creek? We'll be looking for a firm that really, again, has a strong track record of doing engagement around these types of topics, and I will be very much engaged in kind of really spearheading not only the entire project there, but I'll have a special set of responsibilities around making sure we're doing our community engagement the right way. And welcome, obviously, participation from all of you as we get into that project. Next, Clive Green Belt. These are a number, it'll be interesting to see this coming year how our storytelling opportunities come up. We know as we get into this warm weather season, we always have a chance to go and tell people about trail etiquette and safety. We know we're going to have the Green Belt goats out there, which are some of the most fun spokespeople to, for the city to work with. The storytelling.
Were you able to make them talk? Is that what you said? As long as you feed them. Joyce told us earlier, everyone's wild chat, right?
They, well, if they can't speak, and I know they could type because they've got Twitter. I don't think there is a more important asset in the city when we're thinking about sort of how do people think about our community. I don't think there's a more important asset in the city than the green belt for people to sort of, if you had to boil Clive down, if we really wanted to understand, how, where do we send people if they want to understand, what do they mean by distinct by nature? I would send people to the green belt. That means that we've got a wonderful, we know we have a wonderful story to tell there, but we need to tell it with frequency. We need to tell it with a whole lot of artistry as well. So I'm looking forward this coming year to beyond the goats, telling more and more stories about trail, telling more and more stories with our friends at Parks and Recreation about programming that they're doing in there as well, telling a lot of stories about some of the work we can do collectively as a community to improve the habitat there, getting rid of some of the invasive species, making sure that our tree canopy is in good health, and making sure that we're setting that green belt up to be as beautiful for generations to come as it is for all of us right now. Pavement maintenance, street capital improvement, snow ice control, that's another steady drumbeat. We're going to be telling that story throughout the year. It takes a different headline at different points, snow ice control, maintenance, getting streets, potholes filled at different points of the year. And once we get into the construction season, making sure we're talking about that huge investment that you all are making in streets throughout the entire city. One thing that we'll be immediately, that's important to do in the first part of the year, is tell the financial component of that story. And we are hopeful that with the new website in 20, in this coming year, we will be able to build out a complete sort of interactive map for the CIP projects with a special emphasis on some of those streets projects as well. So Cory and my team and tech services, we're working carefully on that right now, and hopefully in the first quarter of 2020, we will have some draft maps to bring back to all of you to see what a visual representation of the CIP potentially looks like for us moving forward. That feeds nicely into talking about the finances and taxes. You're familiar with all of the items there, but a couple I want to really call out. One, lost is now passed in ballparts of the city, Dallas County and Polk County. We need to show people that we are putting those dollars right on target, exactly where they voted to put them. So that will be a major component of the finance center that we're building on the new website. It's not built at this point, but we will be building that here through the end of this month and certainly as we get into January, February and March. Another reason why that's so important, with state legislature's action this past year, there are some amended requirements for how we make sure we are being transparent and accurate as we tell the city's financial story. A few small things that we need to do, like sharing the information at certain times on social media, having a few more public hearings as part of it as well. But we know just from typical attendance that we see at our public hearings, that's not going to be meeting people where they're at. We want to meet people where they're at. That means we're going to lift this up in the newsletter. That means we're going to make, push this out not only when we have to on social media, but at other points as well, because these are people's tax dollars. And it's incumbent on us to tell a story that is intelligible to them and really takes what can seem like a very complex and hard thing to understand with a lot of different layers of government and steps, but bring it back down to those core ideas. What are the core responsibilities of our city? What are the core priorities that have been set by the council? And how do the dollars that they pay in taxes align with those projects as well? I'm really looking forward to doing more work to help get more engagement around this. Last year, I think we did a pretty good job sharing that information. I think we've got some real room to grow, though. If we do it well, I think we'll be, and are recognized for that, I think that we'll have a lot of other cities come and ask us, hey, how did you get that done right? Because it's a tough one to get people to engage on. The last four there, I'll quickly say, the public safety building. Many need opportunities to tell stories about our investments in public safety. I know that a number of people with the PD are excited to try and send our, one of our new tactical vehicles with the Rams, see if we can knock down a wall over there at the former Slumberland Building. So we'll have a lot of fun storytelling to do around that and getting that building up out of the ground. And then the census participation and recruiting new staff. This afternoon, I actually met with our partners at Hatch Media to talk about a police department-specific recruiting video that they're going to help us make. We'll be shooting that video, much of that video, next week on Tuesday and Thursday. I do want to come back then to economic development, University Avenue Corridor Study, which Doug mentioned, the business engagement ongoing with the flood-prone properties along University Boulevard, and then the 86th Street businesses, engagement with them as we're talking about the broader first Eastern Neighborhoods planning process. All of those are sort of specific areas where we know we want to have some great input from area businesses. And I'm a big believer in hooks, not just generally asking everybody to come and give us their feedback, but I want to get feedback from people who really have a stake in a particular story or in a particular issue. And we have businesses that have particular stakes along all three of those bigger projects that are happening in the city, and I look forward to engaging them around it. Any questions about priority campaigns? Yes, Councilwoman?
Pete, I had the chance to attend both the Clive Community Health and Wellness Session and the rally session that was on prescription drug abuse, and it might be kind of included here that we would promote what is going on with those groups, but I feel like that's a place that Clive is really taking a leadership role, and it should be something we're talking more about. And I really had no idea what was happening with it until I went to those meetings. So I would like to see that included as a priority if we could.
We certainly can. I try to align these with what you all put at the top of the list here. And so that's why that particular issue is not represented here, but that doesn't mean that this needs to be the exhaustive list. We know there are many opportunities, things like with the National Days when we ask people to do prescription drug drop-offs. So that came up during. So that came up during the rally luncheon. I thought, wow, what a wonderful story to tell. I know the chief puts it in his reports when we talk about how much tonnage has shown up in those boxes and then has been appropriately disposed of as well. And we definitely do it with the mayor manager walks as we try and get more and more people engaged around those, though honestly, our engagement efforts there haven't produced a huge turnout in terms of people walking yet. So it's a wonderful, I think it's a great hook. I think that it's one that we have many places where we can always keep sounding that note, especially in places like the newsletter, and then also through the parks programming and the Greenbelt Striders, for example, the walking program that they promoted throughout this course of the summer and the early fall. I think we have a way to put some more emphasis on that as a program that a lot of different people can get into and get into that place that we really care about, again, the Greenbelt.
Well, it really had a mental health component with both, and I just think there is value to showing that that's something that we're aware of and are really taking a leadership role in.
But, you know, maybe that, that role or that leadership piece is, comes in the, you know, your channels, using your channels to share their stuff.
Really?
Maybe that we don't take the lead in it, we don't put it in this list in particular, but that we focus on watching to share Twitters and share Facebooks and because you are building a following, right? And you kind of alluded to it earlier, and so are we close to, how long have you been with Clive now?
A year and sneaking up on a half, yeah.
Yeah. And I, you look at this list and it's amazing, all right, what you've put together and what you've changed that, you know, Matt and the council, with Matt's direction chose to go a different direction than we ever have in bringing in communications and telling the story. And I think it's a huge piece of any organization and it can easily be passed over, right? But it makes everyone's job, staff, and ours, a lot easier when you start seeing things like this be built. And this is, this is a lot of work. This is, you know, it's a, this is a heavy lift which you have in front of you and you've been doing. And it's really, I think, put us in the forefront already. And so kudos to you and your staff because I'm hearing around the metro that they see a lot more of you. They see a lot more of you through this and Clive through this. And they are chattering about what we're doing in our social media and what we're doing other ways as well and our engagement in the communities. I think more of this helps us later. I tell, you know, my staff often is, we've got to sing our own praises, we've got to tell the good stories, we got to tell a lot of them because it just takes one thing to bring you back down to neutral, and then you got to tell a whole bunch more good ones, right, to get that credit built up. And I think you've done a heck of a job in the last year, year and a half of doing that for us, and so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
And it takes a conscious effort, right, to do that?
Why?
So, I mean, it's not just something that happens naturally. And I think that, you know, I had a number of residents from the Clark Street meeting, you know, just thank me when I really hadn't done anything for the process.
That's typical.
Right, yeah. I mean, the point is that the process that you put in place for Clark Street was very effective, and that's exactly the way we should be doing those types of projects. And so, yeah, I'm just very pleased with that. And again, that reflects really good on us and makes our job easier, as Mike said. So, yeah, I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, Pete, we talked a little bit about this before after attending that one of the Clive Historical Society functions that a board member approached me with some concerns that, you know, their participation was very, very, very low. They only had a few active members on that. And I know we had talked about that and you were going to digest that a little bit. Well, that's not on our priority campaigns, which is understandable. I just want to make sure that's somewhere on the radar right there, that we are considering that and we are looking at that organization and some ways that maybe we can help them out, help promote their, you know, what they do and, and maybe find some collaborations with some organizations here in Clive, but really to help them tell their story right there. So I just want to make sure that that, while it's not a priority, it is something on the radar.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I was reflecting back on that conversation we had too, and it's worth, I'm thinking about this when we're thinking about all of these campaigns. We are not the only storytellers in Clive. And on a lot of stories, we're not the biggest, loudest, or even most important storyteller in Clive. There are many times, though, when we can play a big validator and amplifier role. And so when the Historical Society is looking for board members, sometimes having a hard time finding folks, it's absolutely appropriate, I think, for, as a city, for us to think about, okay, this is related to the city, it's in a particular kind of, not the center mass of our priorities, but it is still related to things that we care about a lot. It's part of the story of making Clive distinct by nature is telling our interesting historical story, telling the story of the Greenbelt with those partners as well. This lines up. So what role then can we play to put the call out for folks who might be interested? That's an easy one for us to put in the newsletter. We frequently feature some other information that they like to put out there, like this day in, in history in Clive, something interesting happened, or this month in the history of the city. I think certainly for this January newsletter, I'm going to suggest to them that we put something in that says specifically, are you interested in serving and helping them craft something that better articulates what their group does and why it's important to the city.
And we talked to Pete, I know a little bit about how we can engage maybe Walnut Ridge and Soul Crest and some of those restaurants that might have a historical interest in participating as well.
Absolutely. That was a great idea.
You know, another thing that's been effective, Pete, I think, is your efforts with Westside Neighbors Magazine. In addition to the newsletter, that goes out to all the residents and people look at that, right?
Yeah.
And I've definitely seen an uptick in information from the city in that publication, and I think that's very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, Clive Living would be another one as well. Westside Neighbors is a smaller team, so they need, they're always looking for more content, and I could fit more pieces in there.
We can leverage that, yeah.
Yep, but we definitely get into Clive Living Magazine as well with some great stories.
It's probably worth noting that the Historical Society is about to go through a strategic planning process, so maybe reporting on that or even inviting people to participate in it if they encourage that would be a good topic.
Okay. It's a great call out. Okay, last slide then will be a slide about how we do our work. So these are very similar to what we've talked about in 2019, a couple of big change, a couple of additions, though. One would be instead of building the cityofclive.com, we're going to continuously improve it. The website is only as good as the content managers who are using it and creating the content that people need there. We've got a lot of work to do, even to get our pages really looking visually rich. We've made huge progress. I want to give a great, great shout out to our library staff and our park staff in particular. They are the most popular pages in the whole cityofclive.com domain, and they put in a huge amount of work throughout the 2019 to get their pages looking as good as they do right now. And they know, now that we have a tool like this, that using it well means putting the time in, engaging content, keeping things fresh, no stale pages, no dead information, no pages that just have lists of links on them. We need to make sure that when people get to our site, they have a good experience getting the information they need quickly and that they have opportunities then to continue to engage with that content and maybe find something else that's fun to do as well. Parks and library staff, their pages are just looking fantastic. We'll do that throughout the entire cityofclive.com. More in-house video and select professionally produced video, at least three professionally produced videos are on the horizon. One is going to be the police department's recruiting video. We know that that's a tough, tough role to recruit for, and we want to give people a really good flavor for how great that team is and what an honor it would be for them to get a chance to come and join it if they apply. Alongside that, we want to do a professional video that is more about HR in general for the city of Clive, why working for a city, why serving this community was an honor, and why people should look for opportunities to do that. We know that'll be useful as we go into our seasonal hiring. We know it'll also be useful as we're hiring for some tougher, more technical positions, maybe some of our PW positions we know that are tough to hire for. The last one we know we're going to do this year for certain is going to be an animated video about the city's finances, something that we can come back to year over year over year, and something that's appropriate to put up, especially in those social media spots and on our new website, where people can use that as a way to get their brain wrapped around how cities do their money, how they do finances in general, and then use that then to go off into some specific things on the CIP potentially or the budget, any other part of the financial story that they want to dive deep into. But a video is going to be a nice way for them to get started. If we still have got the capacity and we still have the budget, I also am interested, I'm just working right now with a number of firms to figure out what would a Clive Greenbelt video look like? Something very cinematic, something that really nails the brand of the city, something that we, if we were going to tell people, one thing you want to go and engage with and to understand what our community is all about, watch this first. Those are big goals for one little video, but it's something that is on my mind because the Greenbelt again is so important. The next one I want to call out, the last one I want to call out, because all these others you're all quite familiar with, but it's the utilization of some of our polling tools, a little bit better than we've used them in the past. So last year, Amanda and I, working with our entire team, came and presented some of the results from the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. This February, it's budgeted, we will be back out in the field with our survey tool and then coming to all of you to share the results of that big paper survey they'd sent out. We run these out every two years. We've got an interesting set of surveys now that give us some interesting trend lines, and they have been valuable to us, though we haven't seen massive change in any item that I can recall off the top of my head. Steady, though, is an important result. It's a really good, important result, especially when steady for us means steady and steady very high. The addition that they are bringing, our firm is bringing, though, they recently merged with a company that specializes in online polling, which doesn't mean just anybody participates. They actually go and validate that the people participating are residents of Clive. Or even if we want to get more specific than that, we can narrow in on particular geographic areas of Clive using some of these tools as well. The other powerful thing it allows us to do is to get out of just that once every two years snapshot around a whole lot of issues and now get very, very specific on particular issues with the frequency that we want and with the timing that we want. So it would be a way for you to go and temperature check on how are people feeling about, say we, I'm not going to say, say we have a flood event. We're not having a flood event.
Don't jinx it.
Don't worry. But say we want to specifically talk with people who live in the first planning district about Lanan Park, and we wanted to go out and digitally meet those people as best we can where they're at and get a little sense for what are people feeling? What are they, we would want to pair that up, obviously, with actually being in the park too and talking to folks. We want to make sure we're presenting information in multiple languages. Excellent point earlier that I, Councilman, about that, we know that's a reality as we're doing our engagement there. I think a polling tool like this, though, could prove very valuable. It gives us something that we can share with others. Now, the key to making this tool work, assuming we move forward, and we'll have a longer discussion about whether we really want to move forward with this tool in January when there's an actual final proposal from the firm that I can share with all of you to review and really pressure test, because this is money. This is, you know, it's not cheap to run these surveys. But I, the key to making that work is that we build up a bench of people who are used to responding to it. That's on us. They can't magically snap their fingers and say, well, we can see all the people who would like to do it in Clive, but it will be on us to actually build that group up. But I really like the idea of going out to our community and saying, would you like to participate very directly in helping us understand the most important issues in your neighborhood? Not just in Clive, not big abstract, but the hooks, the things that you care about in your neighborhood, the pavement conditions in Country Club, the pavement conditions in Country Club West, the pavement conditions in East Clive, the future of Lanan Park, the stormwater and water conveyance that's happening in Indian Hills Woods. We can do a lot of interesting things, I think, with a tool like this. I still want to study and to review with all of you exactly how far we can push with something like that, but I think it will be a type of thing that we add to our toolbox that might create some very positive engagement for us long term. With that, I would be happy to take direction from all of you on other items here.
I would really like our citizens to understand taxes. And we hear, you know, that we're raising your tax, that all we do is raise taxes all the time, and it's simply not true. And they don't understand that the tax bill that they get, the Clive portion is just about 30% of that. So a simple, maybe even a pie chart where you pull out the city portion of it and show, you know, the school and everything else, would easily and quickly communicate that message. It's the same thing about the tax rate over time. I mean, they think we keep jacking it up and you actually have a line or bar chart that shows, you know, that it hasn't been. So something that would clearly communicate that very easily for them, because, I mean, in fact, we just got this a couple of weeks ago.
Different between assessed value and taxable value, which is-
Yeah.
I've written a lot of emails on that one.
So I want to give a shout out to Matt. We're always looking for tools like that that help us break that down. We've seen some that are not good.
Yeah.
It's tough trying to take a lot of information and boil it down into something consumable. Matt found a good one, and I think it's one that we will heavily lean on for the city of Dubuque. For multiple years now, they, it looks like they've used that format, and they not only start by talking about what the person first experiences, like the tax bill is there. It's outrageous, it's huge, it's going up. And then walk them then into the city portion of that, and then they do an excellent job in that, showing over time how Dubuque's tax rate has done a little bit of this. When we put that chart up there, it's going to be a lot of this. And we're also going to put in there, as we tried to do through, last year through the Economic Development Newsletter, especially in other spots, put in that chart that shows where are we relative to our neighboring communities as well.
Yeah, that'd be a good message.
Yeah, so that's a great call out, Councilman.
Yeah, along that same lines, I think part of that too is the county assessments right there, that that's not the city assessing their properties, it's the county right there. Then the second point is there's only one S in Lost.
No, there's two.
Local options.
Sales and services.
Well, it's an easy one, we've gone back and forth on.
Yeah.
I've seen it both ways.
Yeah. Yep. Councilman, I'm glad that you brought that point up because as much as we want people to sort of understand the realities of this is an assessment, that's not, we didn't pick that number. At the end of the day, it's sort of like pavement, right? People can understand over time with some teaching that, yeah, it's complex, and yeah, we're trying to maximize the value in the streets, and yeah, we know we want to dig them up only when we can also, if we're going to redo them, when we do the water in the sewer as well. But what they care about is that experience, that feels when they're driving down their street, when they're pulling out of their driveway. And I don't blame them for that, and I don't blame audiences for feeling like that when they look at their tax bills either. I want to, I think that we benefit, our storytelling is better when we acknowledge the legitimacy of the way that they're feeling about these things that are tough. When doing so, I think we really show folks that we are committed to hearing them and really understanding. And once we've done that, once we start with that, then we've created space for them to hear nuance and to hear and learn additional information as well. If we don't, though, start with that affirmation of the way they're feeling and that acknowledgement of their experience, then I think we can get into some adversarial situations pretty quick.
I like your Schoolhouse Rock idea of your animated-
We'll see if we can get a little Bill dancing around for us.
Some music.
Even to John's point, it's, you can teach through that, right? Use that, teach it in college, political science, you know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Anything else for Pete? Very good.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Next item we have is our financial audit. Dave?
Right in time, Dave.
Sorry, I was a little late. There's the actual. Thank you again for choosing us to do your independent auders. My name is Dave Ellis with Demmon and Company. I'm going to go over the report as quickly as possible. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility as auders is to express an opinion on the financial statement. We conducted the audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. The financial statements are on the cash receipts and disbursements basis of accounting, which is different than general accepted accounting principles. You don't have accruals of compensation and that sort of things in there or accounts receivable. In our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects on the cash basis of accounting, so unmodified or- on the cash basis of accounting, so unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Going over to the pages 15 and 16, statement of cash receipts, disbursement and changes in cash balances, a couple items I wanted to point out there. The change in cash balances for your general fund for fiscal year June 30, 2019 was a positive $316,000. So the fund went from a little over $6 million to almost $6.4 million. Your total increase in cash for the year for the governmental funds was $3.7 million, from $17.7 million up to $21.4 million. Total receipts for the year governmental funds was 28, over 28 million, total expenses of $31.2 million. On page 18, the, it's Exhibit D for the proprietary funds, your enterprise funds, total charges for service was $9.2 million, total operating disbursements was $5.1 million, so your excess of operating receipts over disbursements was a little over, almost $4.1 million. Your increase in cash balance in the enterprise funds due to some transfers and that, your cash balances went up $864,000 in total from about $10.9 million up to $11.7 million. Starting on page 20, for about 20 pages, there's footnotes to the financial statements. I'm going to skip over to page 24, Note 3, your long-term debt. Total beginning, at the beginning of the year was about $19.3 million. You issued $4.2 million and redeemed $7.5 million, so your total general obligation debt at the end of the year was $15,955,000. Going over to page 42 and 43 is your budgetary comparison. On that, you can see that there is one area that was over budget. The debt service fund was over budget by a little over $580,000 and that was due to some refunding bonds that were, that happened during the year that wasn't budgeted for. So that was just a miscalculation there from that standpoint. Going over to pages 58 and 59, this is a schedule for 10 years, just kind of, it's one of those that I kind of like to look at. Your total receipts in 2019 was a little over 28 million, in 2010 is $21.7 million, so obviously a fairly significant increase there. Your total disbursements were about, were $28.2 million in 2010 and there were $31.2 million in 2019. We have one other report in there, independent auditors reports on internal control and compliance based on an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. We do look at your internal control to determine our tests during the audit. We also, if we find any deficiencies in internal control, we are required to communicate those to you. We're pleased to say that we did not find any material weaknesses in your internal control this year and the only item of non-compliance was the over budget in the debt service fund. So that was the only item that we have reported back in your findings, on your scheduled findings, Item 2A19 on page 63. So that's a very quick coverage of that. We do want to let you know that we did not encounter any difficulties during the audit. There are no disagreements with management in performing the audit. Again, very, very clean audit, we appreciate all the hard work they did to get us in and out of here as fast as possible and I think it went very well from our perspective, so we really appreciate that.
Questions for Dave, otherwise?
It looks like a very clean audit right there. Appreciate your work and that. Any watch, any watch areas, sometimes you have those?
I think with, you know, with any city, you always want to watch any place you have cash, cash receipt, actual cash handling procedures, you know, and that's fairly minimal. You know, maybe your pools and some of those types of things, but really the good thing is that most of the cash comes in through wire transfer anymore, through the, for the property taxes and that sort of stuff. And then obviously the items that we are required to report on, those are the things that we always have to look at, those things on the last page. So those are things that we always want to make sure that you look at. Credit cards, and I don't recall whether you have credit cards, but that's another thing that's out there that we have to always look at to make sure that, only paying for the credit cards that are under the city's name. So those are things that we always look at when we come out, so.
Trips or horse farms or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah. You read that story, huh?
Any other questions for Dave? We need a resolution to approve the audit.
Move your resolution.
Motion for a resolution in a second. Further discussion? Now, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? The audit is approved by a vote of five to zero. Very good. Next, we'll move into the reports. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. I mentioned it before, but we had a wonderful meeting on this week, earlier this week on Tuesday night with representatives from the neighborhood, Clark Street neighborhood, and we had really, most of that conversation ended up being about, well, first, did we design something here that aligned with what they'd approved, but we talked a lot about stormwater and stormwater management and why we need to manage that. The two big reasons why, one, we have to live according to the city's rules, same way that we ask private development to live by those water rules, we need to live by them as well. And two, it creates a wonderful opportunity for us to bring a lot of beauty into the neighborhood. So as you are engaging with folks who live there, you'll hear them talking about bio cells and you'll hear them talking about street trees. We're still working on what the final sort of detailed parameters are going to be, how many cells, how big are the cells, so forth. But what we're talking about with, from a stormwater management perspective is being able to use those cells to get about two-thirds of all of the water we need to manage under control. The cells work in a very simple way, which is good soils, plants that like the water, water gets off the street through the storm sewer into the cell and then it gets to go through that good natural process where it is absorbed into the soil and cleaned then ultimately before it's discharged out into other parts of Walnut Creek. We have some drawings that I'm happy to share with folks about what the corridor could look like with these cells and with some of these street trees as well. They're large files, but we'll see if we can't get those on Matt's email and if we can't, we're going to be putting all that information up on the project page for Clark Street. But a very, very positive meeting and we anticipate bringing people together to get really into the nitty-gritty later on this spring and I'll be making individual phone calls to the people who might have one of these cells or a street tree in front of their home in this phase of the project, just so they're not surprised when they hear people start talking about, I can't wait to see that beautiful tree in front of your house. That's everything.
Thanks, Pete. Ted?
Yeah, so just to kind of echo Pete's comments, John and I were at the Clark Street meeting and it was very positive. I think we had maybe 35 to 40 residents there, something like that. And, you know, I think the reason why it was so positive, even though they know a whole lot of messiness is coming, is because of the process that we've been through and the goodwill that we've kind of already established with those folks. And so I think they're all expecting a, probably a pretty tough summer, but at least they know about it and they're expecting it. And so I think that that makes it a lot better, so. So that was a very positive meeting. MPO, we had a really light agenda, but there is a new effort to do what they're calling water investment mapping, where they're trying, they're going to try to map out all of the infrastructure investments that are water-related, stormwater and the like. And so they're going to be coming to staffs for that, for each of the cities, so that they can kind of consolidate that into a regional mapping system. So I expect that to come here in the near future.
Ready?
A couple things, attended the Christian Brothers ribbon cutting with Pete, also attended the Chamber After Hours event over at Silvercrest, attended the Christmas tree lighting here at City Hall. Phenomenal job, Todd, that your team did. I tell you, it was a new business format, kind of a new business model right there. It was very well-attended, a lot of new things, lighted hay rack rides and a lot of different events in the library, a lot of kids involved, really a nice event right there. Santa came riding on the fire truck, but it really, a well-attended event and really a great format that, far more community involvement than we've seen with the previous business model that was over on, at Oshnein Plaza. On the flip note of that, I think one of the casualties was the Clive Historical Society's event right there, that there's just a few people there that didn't attend that and without the tree lighting, it just, there's probably some questions on how that was promoted, et cetera, but that was kind of a casualty of the event right there. So perhaps in the future, we can look at ways to involve them or somehow, it shouldn't be a one or the other, but, you know, ways that we can help to build their event as well, whether it's through promotion or collaboration or what have you. But really a great event, kudos to your staff on that.
Thanks.
And you did a great job with the weather. It's one never.
Live festival.
Is that it, Eric?
It's it.
Metro Advisory Council, we had a report this last meeting on Airbnbs and we have a model ordinance. We'll wait to bring it to the councils until Des Moines tweaks there. They're going to do a little bit of tweaking in the spring, once they do that, and we'll make adjustments in that model ordinance and bring it back here. Susan?
Another event that conflicted with the historical society event was the awarding of Clive Community Foundation awards. So there's discussion about trying to schedule better next year so that won't happen again. It was good to see several from Clive at the Bravo 15-year celebration. That's kind of a big, big step. And I've already mentioned attending the rally and community wellness meetings.
Very good. And the mayor was in attendance at Bravo and I guess, Matt, I don't know if you want to comment, that Clive's been involved with day one from Bravo and we received so many indications of appreciation from those that benefited from it and Clive's role in being a leader.
Yeah. Mayor Sirxina was one of the founding members of that initial group that helped put the concept together.
Michael?
Just have one note, tomorrow morning at 8:45, Dart will be having their Property Tax Formula workshop. So yet another financial workshop for them, trying to figure out what that formula is in the future between all the members. So that's, that one key revisit, right, was the governance and then the formula and how that happens. It'll be an important time in the next year to figure out how to give you that bill up and that's what you all have asked for, not just you, but many of the councils around Metro, so it's happening.
Alain, legally, are we good?
Not yet.
Very good, man.
Just a couple things, a lot of kudos to Joyce's staff, you know, the audit, it seems like a simple process, comes through every year, clean, good to go. I think that's a lot of the hard work that the clerk's office does, Joyce and her team. I say that and I forget Matthew's now the clerk, so Administrative Services Director, so. But a lot of work is put into that in a compressed amount of time and I think you see the results of that effort in what the audit report that you just approved. Couple things I also wanted to mention, too, is a couple key dates, why I have you all. Next Tuesday at 5:30 at Diamond Public Safety, we'll be doing our next neighborhood meeting related to the public safety facility. Two, two big objectives on that is, number one, is to share the news from tonight of that we have established a demolition contractor, that work will be happening, the building will be coming down, to kind of give them a heads up on that and the timeline related to that. And number two is to start to share some refined site plan concepts with them. I know the two chiefs actually went door-to-door delivering the postcard, talking about the meeting last week to maximize attendance as much as we can for those direct, those single-family homes in particular that are directly to the south and to the west and to the east, kind of southeast, southwest, south of the project site, to start showing some of the site plan concepts, get the reactions to that in terms of that buffering area to the south and how the, where the concepts that we have, versions of the building in terms of the interaction and getting their feedback on that. We've also started engaging, et cetera, and we'll start engaging the churches to the west on kind of the commercial properties and how those will interact with the site. We've already kind of made a, had a conversation with Stuff, et cetera, about kind of some shared drive use on the east side and how that might work. So definitely a lot of things to update the neighborhood on next Tuesday. Another key date I wanted to mention is January 3rd, Friday, the morning of is the, what we have scheduled for the employee appreciation breakfast at 8:00 AM and planning to have you all involved in that. Hopefully that works for your schedules. Please let me know if that does not work for you. It'd be, again, across the street at 8:00 AM. Excited to do that and kind of kick off the new year. So some key dates that I wanted to mention to you. Also, as we get into January, both those council meetings in January, like past years, we'll be starting to work through the budget workshops with, starting with road use and utilities for your first meeting in January and then the general fund budget, the second meeting in January. And we'll also talk a little bit about, as we get into those, the change in the process a little bit this year, minor change, but the legislative change from last session on the additional public hearing related to if the council decides to go above the 2% growth mark, which I can tell you just from our taxable valuation growth alone, it's above that 2% and with tax increment financing releases, we're going to be well above that, which, again, for growth communities is not a surprise and that was one thing we mentioned to the legislature last year related to that regulation and I know Senator Schneider's also heard that from his other communities as well. So, but we'll talk through that a little bit because that is a new part of the process we'll require, you know, if that is something that the council's interested in, we'll require all that supermajority vote for approval of the budget, again, some different things this year for January. Last thing I'll mention is right here, I have a petition that's now come in from the Berkshire and Douglas neighborhood that I've made the council aware of in terms of conversations related to that intersection. We're now working through the neighborhood traffic process that's been established by the council in terms of reviewing that petition and then presenting that petition back to you all for receiving file and then also with some options. So this is the four, it's a Douglas-through and Berkshire stop signs right there at the northwest corner of Shula Elementary School and some concerns that that neighborhood has in terms of the nature of that intersection. And so we'll be bringing some information back, either that first meeting in January or that second meeting in January, depending on kind of timing. I know we have some busy meetings here, but with some options of potentially maybe looking at a traffic study, give you some options to think about going forward on that. So that'll come up in January as well, but we'll be sure to reply back and confirm with the residents that have initiated this, that we've received that and we'll be starting to work the process. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Matthew, do we have any correspondence?
All the correspondence were in your packet. I do want to remind everybody that we'll be doing.
Oh, yeah, the official oath of office. Ceremonial for January 9th.
Right. Any other matters for the good of the order? Otherwise, we'll stand adjourned at 7:51.